Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council Meeting of August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, bless this assemblage. Grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded in the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Adam McClure, roll call, please.
Counselperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Counselperson, I have to call Jill Axarott. Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Counselperson Lindsay Jackson. And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Present. Minutes of July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Unless there are corrections or additions, please make a motion. You have a second?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. None opposed. Our first item is a presentation from Peter Feinman, the President of the Institute of History, Archaeology, and Education, dealing with the Marquis de Lafayette. Peter?
We're gonna start with a movie.
Okay.
Mon Dieu! Two centuries have passed, and America has changed. These devices in everyone's hands must be quite the marvel. And the streets are bustling with characters that require no horses. I would know. Wow. This return back to America shall be quite the adventure. Thank you very much. During my time, I advocated strongly for the abolition of slavery and universal human rights. It warms my heart to see America has progressed on that front. Liberty and equality. Ah, this hallowed ground, where my dear friend Hamilton's victory began the journey of a united America. After two hundred years, I am glad to return to America. The battles, they were many in my time. But this great nation was worth every effort then, just as it remains worthy today. The spirit of liberty has truly made this land a beacon of hope and of progress.
Thank you. And it says Lafayette is coming back. Peter?
Yes, he is.
Tell me, tell us about Lafayette returning.
James, President James Monroe invited Lafayette to return.
How to kill all mosquitoes in the area in ninety seconds.
Technology. Thank you for this opportunity. President James Monroe invited Lafayette to return to the United States in eighteen twenty-four. He was here for thirteen months. He arrived on August fifteenth, eighteen twenty-four, Staten Island, then went to New York City, and was here in Westchester on August twentieth. His visit was very popular. We have a Lafayette Drive right here in the town, which is symptomatic of how he was received throughout the country. The American Friends of Lafayette will be celebrating this bicentennial. They will be having their national conference in Manhattan next summer, right at this time. And on Sunday, the eighteenth, they will be spending it in Westchester. That means they will be sending perhaps two hundred people in tour buses from Manhattan, coming from all the way through up to Sawpit, as the newspaper accounts of eighteen twenty-four describe it. So I am in charge of the Westchester portion of that. We are looking to see how to celebrate that. We had an excellent meeting between the town and the village on how to do that. We're starting with this resolution or proclamation as a way of putting people on notice or making them aware of the hundred ninety-ninth anniversary and giving them advanced notice of the two-hundredth, trying to see who in the community would like to participate, would like to help. We're looking to see a volunteer joint action group or committee to be set up by the village and the town for it. We are looking right now at having dinner in the Rye Town Park, under the pavilion, with catered by the Barley House, that Debbie's gonna help arrange, correct?
I'll do what I can.
Okay, do what you can. And is that under my five minutes?
You're doing well, Peter. You may continue for another thirty-five seconds.
Thirty-five seconds. All right. So he was on North Main Street. According to newspaper accounts, he had a glass of wine there. So we are looking to do that on the Espinade, on the Byram River. Everywhere he went, he was greeted with musket fire, with music, sometimes with horses, and in our case, wine. So that will be part of the program we try to put together. We'll be asking certain individuals, like the Supervisor of the Town of Rye, to welcome Lafayette here. It can be done in English, if you prefer. That's fine.
Je parle français.
Oh, well, that would be a surprise to him. There will be a Lafayette reenactor here. I don't know if it's the one we saw in the video or not. There are multiple reenactors floating around the country. So that might be the one we get. And that's really the story of what we're gonna do.
Peter, thank you. Thank you very much. For the information of the public, we have a copy of our Town of Rye official proclamation attached to the agenda for anybody to view. And I have a paper copy for Peter.
Peter, would you go up and receive the proclamation?
Come down.
Can you stand in front of the logo?
You're welcome. There's a lot of information in there.
You didn't have to use the door.
We got it. Thank you. Thank you very much, Peter. We really appreciate it, and the Town of Rye will certainly be participating in our celebration of Lafayette. Our next item of business is correspondence from our administrative judge and the other judges. Attached to the agenda is that letter from the judges, wherein they have designated Cecile Sia as the new Chief Court Clerk at the Town of Rye Court to succeed our late beloved Anne Capice. And Cecile will be the new, the new Chief Court Clerk. This is not an appointment of the, of the Town Council. It's an appointment of the judges, and they have advised us formally that they have made such an appointment for, for Sia. Any comments? Questions?
No.
Our next item is a resolution approving the appointment of Neva Garsis to serve as Court Clerk for the Rye Town Court. Obviously, this is also a, a result of the passing of, of Mrs. Capice, leaving us one Court Clerk short for the proper operation of the Town Justice Court. And this again is an appointment of the judges, not an appointment of the council. However, the council has to approve the, the salary, the remuneration for each of the court employees. I just want to say something about Neva, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Hope. Neva comes to us not as a stranger. Neva was formerly employed by the Town of Rye, both as a deputy clerk to Hope and also as a part-time aide to Court Clerk Anne Capice and the Rye Town Court Justices Provenzano and Colangelo. She's highly qualified with a Master in Arts in Criminal Justice, specializing in criminal law and procedure, with a minor in Law and Police Studies. And she also has an Advanced Certificate in Criminal Investigation. And with that, I'm going to, before, let me have a motion in a second, please.
I'll still move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Hope, you wanna say something about Neva? Because you were closest to her.
Yes, I was. And I don't know if I have to call the roll now or later.
No, we'll, we'll say something.
Yes. I'm delighted with this approval for the court. I had the pleasure of having Neva work in my office and sharing her responsibilities. She would work with the court as well. I have never seen a young lady more dedicated and more efficient and, and bright and lovely, and I was blessed to have her. I consider her one of my most esteemed young ladies that I've ever met. So therefore, she would come into the office and take on any responsibility, always follow through, and always grateful to have a job. And then she would leave, work with Anne, and then she would go after work down to John Jay for her masters and, and whatever she had to do, and then be back at work on time the next morning. I treasure her as, as a friend. And this had nothing to do with this, but I highly, I highly congratulate the town and the Town Justice Court for having her come on board. She did have an opportunity to work for Homeland Security and for the FBI. She went through a very intense program, was offered some positions, but when this came up, she decided that as long as the judges wanted her, she accepted it, and she's very happy to be here. Thank you. I always take more time, but I can't say enough about it.
No, that's fine. Hope, I know Neva. She is a fantastic person, and we're so glad to have her back. She's, she's an exceptional person. And just to say, this is an appointment of the, of the, the court, and the judges each interviewed Neva, and they, they have highly recommended her. So with that, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Gladly, yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
And Counselperson Jackson. I'm not sure. And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, of course.
And I just have to mention, I do have lovely two ladies in my office now.
We, we know that. Stephanie and Paula.
Right. What I love is, the first experiences I had was going up to Albany, driving with Hope and Neva, meeting you two up there at the AOT Convention. And all of us having such a wonderful, like, experience with Neva. She was so smart and so committed to the town. And we always talked in meetings about wanting to promote from within, and Neva was a bright and future talent for the town. And I know we felt her loss when she left. So to have her come back in such a position and choose the town feels like she's coming home and really does show what you foster within the township of opportunity for employees. So thanks to you two. And the judges.
Speaking out of turn, when I say... I feel, I felt the same way. Those were the same words that I would have used, is I'm so looking forward to welcoming, welcoming Neva home. We're, we're so much better with her on board. So much stronger.
I'm excited. I almost cried when I saw this. I was just like, this is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Our next resolution is to engage Delzado Consulting to assist the town in upgrading its computer server. Debbie, this is, is really your bailiwick here. Why don't you explain what this is about?
So the life expectancy of a server generally, as I am given to understand, is between six and seven years. Our servers are at that place. We're at the place where the physical hardware is gonna be cost prohibitive to continue paying the warranty, and our Windows two thousand and twelve R-two server operating system that is running on it will no longer be receiving updates as of early October. So it's time. This was an eventuality that we discussed during our budget sessions. We funded accordingly. And I've conducted a search over the space of a number of months, had quite a few conversations about the approach to take. I invited several proposals. It came down to a decision between two, which was a very difficult decision, between our existing IT vendor, Logically, which is the successor to Sullivan Data, which, with which the town has worked for many years, certainly since I joined the town. But ultimately, it, you know, when the, at, at the end of the day, when you look at all of the variables that have an impact on what is the best fit for the town, Marino Delzado and Delzado Consulting is the better fit. And for those reasons, I outlined in a memo to the council last week, or two weeks ago, and they remain the same today. So would you like me to go into further detail?
Just go over the price differential and the recommendation from other communities, please?
The, the price differential is roughly half, to be honest with you. If you take a look at the proposal that we got from Logically versus, you know, with, with the total spend versus the proposal from Delzado, one of the approaches that Delzado is recommending is that we bring the Rye Town Park server over to reside on the town server at the town offices, which will have a number of benefits. If it's possible, we don't know, but we believe it is. And that is much better. We can control the physical environment of the server rather than having it live out at the beach with all of the temperature swings and humidity and the, the leaking roofs and other things that happen out at the server, not, out at, out at the beach, not to mention power failures where we have to reboot constantly, and we have a VPN problem. So the idea is to consolidate all on one. And then there, the, the approach is just much more streamlined. Labor is less expensive. Logically, their, their price per hour starts at one seventy-five, goes up to two twenty-five, and then on top of that, there's a twenty percent project management oversight fee. Delzado, nothing. It's just a straight one seventy-five per hour. So for a number of reasons, it was much the best fit. Delzado also is working actively with the Village of Portchester and the Town of Amerinick, and they got stellar recommendations from both.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the council about this?
It will be housed here, or where will this, the one united server be?
At two twenty-two Grace Church Street.
Got it.
Tommy, anything?
No, I don't have any questions.
Motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson. Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, you forgot Jill.
Okay, even, okay. I'll call everybody. Right. I, it's just I thought that Lindsay would be on Zoom, but I'm, you're right.
No, she's, she's not here.
Okay.
The Resolution Regarding Soul Riders, requesting permission to tie the town pink at Crawford Park. This is something Soul Riders has done for several years. They also do it at Rye Town Park. And their request is in the form, we have a resolution to, to approve Soul Riders to tie the park pink, and what that involves is putting pink ribbons in, to remember, I guess, its breast cancer survivors. Is it just breast cancer? Is it breast cancer survivors? Yes.
Yes.
So may I have a motion in a second?
I'll move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. They're a great organization. They really are.
They are. They're wonderful. They've worked with us and with Rye Town Park, even to the point of changing the ribbons to make sure they're sustainable and made of burlap fabric instead of plastics. They've just been really great for the community.
And people can buy ribbons. We need to put that on the, the website, Debbie, if it's not already, where people can, can purchase ribbons themselves.
And donate them to places. So you could buy a ribbon for your house, but also donate one for Crawford or for Rye Town Park or for Rye City.
I had one on my house last year.
Just make a plain donation to the organization.
Right. It's a wonderful organization. They serve originally the city of Rye, but it is Rye, so it's also the Town of Rye, and they do a wonderful job. Our next item is a resolution donating to the Columbus State Parade. This is in our budget for, in the amount of five thousand dollars. So this is not a new amount. This is a budgeted amount that we do most years. May I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any comment, Tommy? While your phone is going on?
Yeah, that was my mother. I'm sorry. Sorry, Ma, I'll call you back. No, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice day for the Columbus State Parade. Do you have the... It's, it's, it's a nice day. So, no, that's about it.
Have you ever been grand marshal?
No, I haven't.
You should be.
No, it's okay.
Hope has been grand marshal.
Think about.
Hope has been grand marshal, right?
Listen, I'm, no.
I've been on the committee for over twenty years.
Thank you, thank you, but no, I don't need to be.
Next year.
Yeah. I don't need to be.
All right. We've had a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Axarott. Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson. Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes.
Just to note that it's also Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we do really appreciate getting the flavor of the communities in Portchester and their celebrations as well.
Thank you, Pam. Reports. The assessor. Charlie, what do you have for us?
Good evening. I don't have a lot of going on, but I will give you what we do have going on. Over the last three weeks, our Board of Assessor Review has been reviewing all the files and the cases and all the grievances. As of tonight, they will be finished, which is great. They're way ahead of schedule, so that gives us a lot of time to update the assessment roll and have it ready for September fifteenth, when the final roll is then published. Notices of terminations will be sent out. They should be in everyone's hand by September fifteenth, which gives everyone thirty days to then file if they disagree with the board's decision. As of right now, that's really all that's going on in the office. We're starting to work on a lot of the mapping changes for next year for the two thousand and twenty-four roll, inspections and normal office processes. But as of right now, the most important thing for everyone to know is September fifteenth, the assessment roll will be out, and all the decisions will be in the mail for the September fifteenth. All right?
Camille is, is on vacation this week, so we'll skip her formal report, except to say that we have August eighteenth, which is tomorrow, is the Lorax, Dark Souls, the Lorax Movie, Free Movie Night. And we have on September eighth, Friday, September eighth, Funk Salsa Urban. And that, that's also free. The report is in the agenda, should anybody wish to read the Crawford Report. Vic, have a report. Welcome back from vacation. Looked nice and tan.
Yes.
How many balls did you hit in the water?
One in three rounds.
That's not bad.
Yes. Well, you said the Lorax. You said Funk Salsa. Tommy, on the fourteenth of October, we're having a car show.
Yes.
So that's...
Oh, wait, October. I know there's, we're having a car show here in October?
Here, in October.
Hold on a minute. What, what date do we have in October?
October 14th, Saturday, October 14th.
Okay.
Funk Salsa just flew back from Columbus, Ohio, which they played in front of 10,000 people. It's on Facebook. If you didn't come last year, you got to come, because they get everybody involved, they bring everybody up to dance with them. They remind me of the old Four Tops, where everybody danced in unison, and, you know, it's just, it's a great group. And here, I'm meeting with our culinary teacher tomorrow. We're going out to the Container Garden, she was also on vacation, so I'll give you more on that after I meet with her tomorrow. Basically, that's about it. You know, I got a lot of catching up to do.
About the update on the African-American cemetery?
We're ready to put the gravel in.
Pardon me?
We're ready to put the gravel down.
We're ready to put it in.
Yes, the railroad ties are on both sides of the road, and now it's just a matter of gravel.
Are you gonna, are you gonna, are you gonna tamp it down with a steamroller or something, or just drop it?
Well, if we're going to do it as a volunteer project, we're going to rake it out that day, and then we'll see about tamping it down.
Okay. With the, steam, a roller might be the best bet to really get it, get it in there.
Yeah.
We can ta, we can definitely do a, where you do clumps and have it raked in, and then after it's all raked in, then have somebody roll it.
Yeah, just have to talk to one of the contractors.
Yeah, yeah. I think that'd be a good way of doing it, just so we can get some of the high school kids and the scouts again, like we did.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, Pam, Jaffe... Shared with me that there are two community groups that would like to work on volunteer service projects at the African-American Cemetery. So I think that might be...
Yeah, it'd be a good thing to do.
A great opportunity.
Great.
And we can reach out to the rest of our volunteer corps.
Excellent. I'd love to build a gate.
Build a gate?
I'd love to build a gate, yes.
At the cemetery?
Right, where the gate used to be at the opening of the cemetery, there's still a post there. It'd be a great project for somebody to build a gate.
If we build a gate, does, when John goes to cut the grass, does he bring a trailer in there, or is it just a pickup truck?
He brings a trailer.
Is he going to be able to make the turn?
That we'll see, you know, we'll measure and see.
Okay.
We need, we need actually nine feet across.
I like the idea of putting a gate in. I like that idea. But I just want to make sure that, that, that the trucks can get in with no problem. You know, we just got to make sure.
Before we do it, I definitely measure and make sure.
You know, you have connections to the local Boy Scouts. The last big project was an Eagle Scout candidate, correct?
Yes.
Possibly, we reach out and see if there's anyone there.
That would be good.
What kind of gate do you want to do, wooden or metal?
Wooden.
Wooden?
Would this be ornamental kind of a gate, or to serve a purpose?
Both.
Yeah, I guess both.
Both.
We don't want, we don't want people driving vehicles across the cemetery, so you'd have the gate there.
Yeah.
My picture like four by, I figure four by four beans with an X shape.
Maybe it was a round post, maybe a, the old post and rail type.
All right.
Yeah. Okay.
Like a branch.
Yes, exactly.
Modesto Acevedo called me the other day, and he's in charge of the whole troop 400 and oversees all the, the Boy Scouts, and I did mention to him if he has any ideas for, you know, for the Eagle Scout projects.
We always have something.
I was just going to say, maybe we can talk later, try to figure out a date when we can do this. You know?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Vic.
Welcome back.
Sorry to interrupt, Hope, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Financial report, David? Anything, nothing?
Nothing.
It's all in, in the record. Is Nick on? Nicholas?
Supervisor, members of the town council, Nicholas Mecker, receiver of taxes. I'm sure everybody that watches TV has seen back-to-school sales and supplies for the kids. So you know what that means. It's time to start collect funding for the schools. So first week in September, you will receive your 2023-24 school bill, half of which will be due by September 30th. Once you receive that bill, I recommend that you go online and utilize our new service where you can preset your payment date. You can pick how you want to pay it, when, and I call it, set it, and forget it. So there is no charge for that service, so please look into it. It can be very, very helpful. Okay? Thank you. And any questions for me?
Nope. Anybody from the council? No questions? Town attorney report? Nothing? Okay. And Hope, your report is submitted. Do you have anything else to add?
Nothing else, just...
Thank you. Do we have any Facebook comments, Deb?
None.
Okay. Comments from members of the audience attending? If not, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a specific personnel matter? It's misspelt on the agenda, it'll be changed. Specific personnel matter. With the announcement, there will be no action taken, and so this meeting will be over as soon as we go into regular session. There will be no further action taken. May I have a motion and a second to go into, into executive session, pardon me?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and adjourned immediately thereafter.